The Monday, August 31st, 2020 meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order at 6:00 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bonzal?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier? Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Here.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. Commissioners, do we have a motion to excuse Commissioner Frazier? Commissioner Stonehouse? I don't have a, I haven't heard from him, so I don't know.
Your Honor, I will motion to excuse Commissioner Frazier.
Okay, do we have a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Commissioners, we have an agenda. Do we have a motion on this agenda? Commissioner Stonehouse?
You're, I'll do it, Your Honor.
All right, thank you.
Your Honor, I motion to approve the agenda as written.
Okay, do we have a second? Commissioner Bonzal?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes six-zero. Tonight, I have a couple of announcements. One, projects continue as planned throughout the city of Marquette. You can see the city of Marquette website for more details. We also have several vacancies on many different boards and committees, and those are starting to meet more regularly again, finally, mostly via Zoom. I'll just read from this list for vacancies. I've had a couple of residents ask me lately which positions are available. So, the Board of Review, Board of Zoning Appeals, Groundfield Redevelopment Authority, Downtown Development Authority, the Harbor Advisory Committee, Investment Advisory Board, Local Development Finance Authority, Local Officers Compensation Commission, Market Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board, Police-Fire Pension Board, Press File Park Advisory Committee, Public Art Commission, and the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee. So, many different opportunities to volunteer within the city of Marquette, and we will be glad to have folks apply for those positions. As you can see, we have a difficult time filling them at times. All right, that brings us to public comment. Do we have any written public comment this evening?
Yes, Your Honor, we had two written public comments. One is specific to the public hearing for three, so I'll just wait for that one. And then the second one was more general. This public comment comes from Elizabeth Bates, who writes, "Thank you for the opportunity to bring up a matter of concern during your commission meeting. I hope you share this email with the commission. It was recently announced that Granite Loma is being proposed as a possible location for a spaceport. Several public officials have already come out in favor of this, though from my reading of articles about it, they were only informed two days ahead of time. A spaceport comes with consequences, and as stewards of the city of Marquette, I ask that each one of you research this proposal in depth. There are consequences all around, from environmental to residential. The surrounding area is not devoid of people. There are residences on all sides of Granite Loma, residences that will be severely impacted by the construction, traffic, noise, pollution, further erosion of the shoreline, possible and probable damage to buildings in the vicinity and to us, people who live there. Space launches are not free from mistakes. We need to be concerned about the lake we live on and its clean water. Being located some distance north of the city does not mean there will be no adverse impact on the shoreline structures or lives of city residents. All of us know that this spaceport comes with a promise of jobs. In the Mining Journal announcement, they suggested jobs for engineers, et cetera, earning $95,000 to $107,000 per year. Will these jobs go to residents in Big Bay, Marquette, or to out-of-town, out-of-state, experienced personnel who will not necessarily even live in the area? Jobs are a good thing for the U.P., but a spaceport here will cancel out other possibilities. Why not purchase Granite Loma and use it to provide a lodge, as a gathering place, convention center, and allow public use of the miles of shoreline and acres of woods? With COVID-19 alive and well, every parking lot plus the sides of 550 are tightly packed with cars, with people looking to be outdoors. Surveys conducted in Marquette County have repeatedly emphasized people's desire for outdoor recreation areas, not more industry. I urge you to research this idea completely. You can start by checking out the Camden Spaceport in southwest Georgia and the already-constructed site at Boca Chica in Texas." I agree with Southern Environmental Law Center Senior Attorney Brian Gist, who states, "Camden County should recognize that this is the wrong place for a spaceport, not after wasting millions more dollars on this ill-advised project. Let us all take heed. Thank you, Elizabeth Bates." And there are a couple of URLs linked in that letter as well.
Okay.
And that, the only public comment.
And we have no one else waiting on the phone? Thank you, City Clerk, appreciate the update. Public comment is now closed. Brings us to item number one on our agenda, a presentation from the Police-Fire Pension Board. We have Chair Mike Archukowski, and I'm wondering if that's going to be via Zoom. I'm thinking it is, so it'll just take us a moment to get set up here. Thank you for joining us, Mike, whenever we're able to get it rolling.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Anybody see me?
Yes, we can see you and hear you. Perfect, thank you, Mike.
Is my slideshow visible in the room?
Not quite yet.
Okay. Well, my name is Mike Archukowski, and I'm a police officer with the city of Marquette. I chair the Marquette Police and Fire Pension Board. Good evening, and thank you for having me present tonight. How is that slideshow looking now? Is it up yet?
We see you, not a slideshow. I'm wondering if you'll need to share your screen and share it. I see city staff conferring over here.
Yeah, he has to share it.
Okay, you'll have to share it. Perfect, we're able to see the presentation now, thank you.
All right. So, 1965, the citizens of Marquette elected to set up the police and firemen with an established retirement system on behalf of the city. We now chair that board. I'm chairperson. There are three other board members currently with me. This came about with Act 345 of the state of Michigan. It provides for the establishment, maintenance, and the administration of the retirement system for the benefit of the firemen and the police officers. What we do is, our retirement system is funded in part by the police officers and the firefighters, and then in part by the city of Marquette. And every year, the city of Marquette graciously contributes money to our fund. The way it looks right now, like I said, we have four people on the Police-Fire Pension Board right now. If you can see the screen, we have Ken Lamar, who's a firefighter. He just started a term. He's our secretary. And Mary Schlitz, a city treasurer, she's our liaison. She's been a member on our board since 2015. And then the trustee is Glenda Gordon. She's been around since 2015 on our board. We have one vacancy, and, Your Honor, I'd like to reiterate too, we have a hard time filling the vacancy that we do have. We need one more trustee to fill that vacancy at some point, which we've been trying to do that for a couple of months. Last fiscal year, from August to August, we had meetings every fourth Tuesday, approximately, 8:30 a.m. in the mornings. And during that time, we had seven regular meetings. We did one special meeting, although five of the meetings that we normally would have had were canceled due to the COVID-19. During this time, we did not have any unexcused absences. Currently, our pension has 59 members paying into the system. Between police, 33 members, and fire, 26 members, there's 59 people contributing. However, there are 68 members drawing from the pension. Forty members draw from the police side, and 28 firefighters draw. Currently, there's four members deferred. That means they were tenured, they had their tenures in here, and then they don't have a full retirement, but they will be collecting when they have the appropriate amount of At the end of the July 31st of 2020, our pension fund had assets totaling $37,499,26. Currently, as per our actuary, done back this past year, on 12/31/2019, our fund was 75% So, some of the accomplishments we've done recently include, we've had a 6.3% growth in our investments fund since 2013. 2013 is when we went from the prior money manager to Wells Fargo. So, since 2013, Wells Fargo has grown our investments by 6.3%. Additionally, in 2018, we put a request for proposals out there to other money managers to see if anybody could help us trim some money to give back to the pension fund. After that request for proposal was done, we still stay with Wells Fargo as they were the best-looking money manager at that point. Additionally, every year, we try to offer a 13th check. To put it short, the 13th check kind of serves as a cola for our members. There's no cola worked into this retirement system. If you retire in 1990 and you make $1,000, you're still going to be making $1,000 in 2020. So, there's no cost lien adjustment. The 13th check serves to fix that. We usually take half of our investment earnings and contribute that towards 13th check disbursements. So, this year, we were able to disperse $68,950, and that works out to be an average of just over $1,000 per retiree. Additionally, we produced and sent out to the members the summary of the annual report. It's on the website. We give the systems funded ratio. We provide them the assumed rate of investment return, so everybody in the, those who are collecting on the retirement have a good idea of what can be expected. It's our goal as a board to manage the money properly, to maintain due diligence, and to make sure the money gets put to where it needs to go, so it turns a profit, or at least we try to turn a profit for the fund and for the city. We are continuously trying to manage and operate the system, and especially keeping up with the current times with COVID. We're trying to work through problems that we see with that and holding meetings. So, anyway, the main goal, though, is to have a viable, or make this fund viable for the future retirees of the Marquette and police-fire departments, and especially for the retirees we have now, and then for the guys that are going to be paying into it now and throughout their career. Issues that come up with our board, again, I'm reiterating the, trying to fill that vacancy that we have right now. We've been trying to put somebody in there for a while. We have somebody that we'd like to slide in there. We know somebody who might be interested. We're just trying to work through COVID and see if that person is still interested. Furthermore, the fund I mentioned is valued at, I'm not valued, it's the wrong word, but we're currently at 75%. We would like to see that up to 80%, but we haven't seen that level of funded since 2010. Overall, within the state, I've heard that, say, being 75% funded nowadays, isn't that terrible? And with that measure, we're pleased with the job that Wells Fargo is doing for us. We've been trying to find strategies to facilitate the program now that has more people drawing from the pension as opposed to putting into it. So, in these past couple of years, the fire department and then the police department voted, both of our unions, to increase our contribution from 5% to 6%. So, we're, it seems like a drop in the bucket, but it's a lease that we can do. Furthermore, as an issue that we see coming up is Wells Fargo Investments is going to transition to a different business name. They're going to become Principal Finance Group sometime in July of 2021. And we, the board, have been assured that it'll be a pretty seamless transition, should take place fairly quickly and seamlessly over the course of a weekend. And that's all I had to offer at this point. I'd field any questions if anybody had one.
Well, thank you, Mike, for the great presentation. You've got a lot of information here, and I know it's not an easy task to make sure that this money is managed responsibly, and you and your committee are doing an excellent job. Thank you. Commissioners, any other discussion or questions for committee chair? I'm not seeing any questions, Mike. I think we are all set. We really appreciate you joining us this evening.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate it, and the board appreciates it.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, moving on to item number two, a public hearing for a new liquor license application. This will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Buffalo Dragon Investments is planning to apply to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission for an on-premises tasting room permit for the honorable distillery located at 136 West Washington Street. Per MCL 436.15367 subsection C, the state requires applicants for on-premises tasting room permits obtain an affirmative recommendation from the local legislative body prior to making application. The application has been reviewed and approved by the city police, fire, community development, and finance departments. The commission scheduled this public hearing during the August 10th regular meeting. Fiscal effect none by this action. Recommendation, following the public hearing, approve the attached resolution recommending the Michigan Liquor Control Commission's approval of a new on-premises tasting room permit for the honorable distillery located at 136 West Washington Street. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. City Clerk, do we have any public for our public hearing on this matter?
We have, no one, no one has called in or written in on this, no.
Okay. Seeing none, public comment is now closed, or public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Frazier? Oh, and let me just let the record reflect, Commissioner Frazier was able to join us. So, do we need to make another motion, or do we just modify the roll call? I'm not sure. We'll just have City Clerk.
Please just modify the roll call.
Thank you, City Attorney. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Frazier, on the motion.
I do, I make a motion to, following the public hearing, to approve the attached resolution recommending Michigan Liquor License Control Commission approval of the new on-premise tasting room permit for honorable distillery located at 136 West Washington Street.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Davis?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Commissioner Frazier? Commissioner Davis, anything to add?
Just glad to see this building being used, and I think that this adds something that is not already available in the community.
Any other commissioners? All right. With no further discussion, City Clerk, could we please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yep.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven-zero. On to item number three, another public hearing, ordinance number 690, an ordinance to amend Chapter 22, Article 3, Smoking by repealing Section 22-60. This is also, would also require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could we please have the background?
Thank you, Mayor. At its regular meeting on July 27th, 2020, the city commission directed the city attorney to prepare for its consideration a smoke-free ordinance for city parks, playgrounds, and beaches. Attached is the draft ordinance. Tonight's public hearing was scheduled during the commission's regular meeting of August 10th, 2020. Fiscal effect none by this action. Recommendation, following the public hearing, adopt ordinance number 690, which will amend Chapter 22, Article 3, Smoking by repealing Section 22-60, prohibited in public places, deemed a nuisance, and by adopting a new Section 22-60. Alternatives as determined by the commission, and we actually did have one comment written in tonight.
Thank you. Go ahead and read that, City Clerk, if you don't mind. Oh, I have to open the public hearing first, thank you. I got so focused on the fact that we had one. We haven't had one in a minute here. Just wanted to make sure we didn't forget about it. All right, public hearing is now open.
Okay, so this is...
Thank you, City Clerk.
Now, I'm confused. This was written by Barb Coleman and Bob Chapman at 985 West College in Marquette, and they write, "As residents of the city of Marquette for many decades, we strongly support the proposed ban on smoking on city beaches and in city parks. Aside from obvious health issues, the fire danger and toxic debris are valid reasons to do so. We would encourage you to add electronic cigarettes to the list for the same reasons. We are forwarding information on these issues to the commissioners and city manager for backup. We think there are some issues with wording and possible conflicts with the existing ordinances that need to be worked out before adoption, but hope that the commission will attend to that and put forth these needed changes for the sake of our community and Lake Shore. Thank you for your consideration and for addressing this essential issue." Barb Coleman and Bob Chapman.
Thank you. Do we have anyone who's happened to call in in the one minute since you've read that? Just wanted to check.
Have none.
All right, public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, would someone like to make a motion? I'm hoping maybe we could suspend the rules for some discussion. Commissioner Schlegel?
I will do that, Madam Mayor. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Thank you, do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please say no. Motion to suspend the rules passes seven-zero. Okay, we've got City Attorney Ron Keefe on the line. Ron, could you please walk us through this document a little bit, and then we can go from there?
Well, thank you very much, Your Honor. As the agenda supplement said, I was asked to, or directed to, draft a smoking ban ordinance on for city beaches, parks, and playgrounds, and that's essentially what I did. What I tried to do is put together a list of all of the properties that meet these definitions of beaches, parks, and playgrounds, and I didn't pair it because to do so would really be exercising policy judgment that I don't have as city attorney. So, I anticipated that maybe some changes, and look forward to those, but my role was to put together an ordinance, and I felt that if I were to take some of these parks or beaches out of the ordinance on my own, I would be doing something that's outside my authority as city attorney, and it's really a policy decision for the commission. So, with that, I'm certainly willing to answer any other questions. I know that there has been some discussion about the campgrounds at the park, but again, I just put that in because that is one of our parks. I didn't put it in because I was recommending that that area be banned, or any other area for that matter, but I just want you to know upfront that this is not a recommendation of mine. What I did was put together a draft of these parks and beaches and playgrounds that you asked me to do. And so, that's kind of where we're at today, right now.
All right, thank you. And we do have the proposed ordinance up on the screen. I know we've got city staff ready and willing to edit as we see fit. I guess we kind of need a general sense of what the commission is hoping to do with this ordinance. I know that we, before it came for vote tonight, we've been talking about beaches and parks, but this really gets down to the specifics, so, Commissioners, go ahead, Mayor Protem Hill?
I have a question for the city attorney. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Could, my memory was that the previous draft had more language, and it wasn't just a list of the locations.
Did you run the watch down below?
Do I miss? Oh, there it is. Okay, so definitions, thank you. Has anything changed to any of the definitions that are below the list of locations from what we saw previously?
There may have been, I don't have that draft in front of me, but I know one draft I saw since the meeting had a provision that really I'd never seen, had not seen before. I don't even know where it came from. And we did, we already had a definition of smoking in the, we already have it in the ordinance, so we took the one that we put in this ordinance draft out because it would just create confusion as to which one applies to what, what part of the ordinance. So, we already had a definition of it, and we didn't see that it was necessary. So, that's kind of what, those are two of the changes I noted. I can't tell you whether any other parks or beaches or playgrounds were added from the original draft.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Commissioner Schlegel?
As the maker of the motion to suspend, Ron, thanks for putting this together. I'm kind of confused when it comes to the verbiage down below that implies that there are certain areas, such as restaurants and other dwellings, that should have percentages of, 40% of the seating shall be designated and maintained as smoke-free, when none of that is available right now because it's law. And that kind of repeats itself a couple of times in section 22-65, and maybe I'm reading that wrong, and please correct me if I am. I'm going to...
You aren't.
What's that?
You aren't. Commissioner, what I was asked to do was to create a specific ordinance for beaches, parks, and playgrounds. There's other, there's other, there are other provisions in this ordinance that could be reworked, but that was not my direction.
Okay.
My direction was to do this. I wasn't directed to do anything about bars or restaurants, and we all know that state law has preempted the ordinance anyway with respect to those facilities. And so, and I focused really on what I was told to do.
Sure, okay, that, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, so I'm going to jump back into the parks and other areas that you were focused, you were tasked with, and the reason for us to be able to speak so nonchalantly in this process is to say our opinions. So, I'm going to say that, you know, I think that you touched on a couple of them already. Tourist park, Commissioners, in my opinion, should not be in this, in this group. I don't feel that, quite honestly, I think that anything outside of beaches is what I'm, I'd like to see all the beaches be smoke-free. Would I like to see all parks smoke-free? Absolutely. I'm a huge proponent of clean air and clean, respecting each other's personal space, but when it comes to a number of these parks, we're going to have to really take a look at the impact that something like this would have to special events that are going to be going on. If we're looking at everything from Lower Harbor to Hurley Park to, you know, a number of these other venues that host specific events, whether it's Beer Fest, Seafood Fest, Guts Frisbee, you name it, you know, there's certain entity or certain groups that you're going to see that are more prone to be likely to have people that might smoke, I'd say. And at the same time, I would expect that we would leave it up to those event coordinators to specify how they might want to, if at all, include smoking, an option for smoking at their events, as well as the putting aside a specific area to smoke. I've spoken with a number of constituents that have very strong concerns about, you know, the impact that this type of restriction might have on their events, so I'm looking forward to hearing what other people have to say as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schlegel. And who made the second on that motion, if you can remind me, City Clerk? Was it Commissioner Frazier? Go ahead, Commissioner Frazier.
I agree with the city attorney, I think it's a great idea, a big park, smoke-free. I think all parks should be included, especially Prescott, because, you know, Prescott's, you know, a ticking time bomb for that stuff. I think it'd be good with the Madison Park, especially with Madison Park getting a new playground possibly. Be good for the kids to be, not have a smoking down there, and, you know, just, you know, all those dangerous stuff where you have to stand six feet away from everybody, but walking more than that behind somebody is smoking, if the wind's right, it gets, it's pretty, pretty bad, but I think all smoke, all parks should be smoke-free if we're going to do one, let's do them all. Anything else I wanted to add was, you know, not only cigarettes, but the other stuff too, we have two comments about including other, other types of smoking too, you know, vaping, marijuana, anything that's legal, maybe including that too, but something to maybe... something to, maybe Ron could do that. If we could add something, Ron, saying anything that involves smoking, you know, anything with smoking maybe, but it's a good idea.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I have two things that I would like to see as we review this. The first is that one of our major objectives here is to protect our lakes and streams. And rather than just listing the beaches, I would prefer to list all city-owned beaches and shorelines. The second thing is that, as I looked at the, uh, the ordinance in its entirety, I would really like to see a review and update of the entire ordinance, the whole Article III, Section twenty-two, which would take care of that, the issue about the restaurants, and it would take care of a couple of other things that I see as a problem. So I actually have a whole list of recommendations or suggestions, but I'm not so sure that we wanna, you know, look at that at this point, or if we're, how we're going to discuss this.
I guess I'm getting a sense from the commission that I'm not sure if we're at a point to work our way through this document and actually approve it tonight. Do we wanna make some additional recommendations to the staff and have it come back at a later date? That's just kind of the...
No, I'd rather have it come back.
I just, I guess if Commissioners could weigh in on whether or not we think we should push it to a future date.
Yeah. And I apologize, I was asking for clarification on that very point you brought up, Paul. So I apologize for jumping in front of you, but I was confused. And it, it sounds like also with some of the same issues that Commissioner Davis has. So yes, I, I think having a discussion on the entirety of the ordinance might bring clarity to the whole thing, and some of these conver- these detail, these very important details could be discussed then.
Okay. Other Commissioners? Commissioner Bonzel?
Um, I would actually, personally, I would just express my feeling that I would feel comfortable having a discussion and voting on this tonight. I think that future revisions could be made to other sections, sections of the ordinance, but I think that the city attorneys done a fine job of putting together a recommendation for Section twenty-two dash sixty. And so personally, I would, rather than tabling this until a future meeting, when we do have other business to do this fall, not least of all the city budget at our next meeting, I would rather have this discussion and make a decision tonight on this particular section of the ordinance.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I might suggest that we consider making some removals to the list that has been given to us, that we might think don't quite fit the way they should. For example, I think Tourist Park, we might want to think about removing from the smoking list, or from this list, simply because we have people coming up with campers' RVs, and it really is a different place, I think, than being an actual city park. And I do think we might think of the Phil Nema Stowe area perhaps also as being removed too, simply because it's so small, that if you're downtown, you pass right through it. And it would be more of an encumbrance, and I think it would be efficient. I do think, however, the remainder of the other locations certainly could be left in. I do think that we could pass it. And I do think that we could request at the same time that the entire ordinance be looked at and cleaned up to reflect a better document, rather than simply kick the can. So we can accomplish the two things. And at the same time, when it comes back a second time, if we choose to tune it again, we can tune it again. Certainly, this is going to be a difficult thing for a lot of people to accept, but we do have to realize that there's one hundred million people, according to the CDC in the United States, that have asthma, emphysema, or some other breathing disorder. And that people who can be exposed to this type of secondhand smoke can indeed have trigger reactions to it that can be extremely serious. We also know that cigarette butts are quite literally, according to a document I read today, the number-one polluter on beaches. And we can blame some of that pollution coming through the storm drains and people dropping them on city streets, but a large amount is from smoking. Now, we also know that everybody isn't gonna follow this religiously. Some people will, and it will have a positive impact, though certainly we're not gonna have the anti-smoking police out everywhere giving out tickets. I mean, like many things in the city, we react to a problem with a reaction to it. So if someone has a smoking complaint, I would assume we have an officer that might be able to deal with that, but not to go out and look for it. So I offer that as something that we could discuss and think about, and perhaps take action on. Thank you.
Thank you. I just got a message from the city manager that John Swenson is on the line and has a comment that he'd like to share with us that might be valuable in relation to the Tourist Park campground. John, are you on the phone?
Yeah, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, you're a little quiet. I'll turn up the speaker a little if I can. Go ahead.
All right, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to make the comment that Tourist Park is quite a bit more than than a campground. That's a fairly extensive park that extends way beyond the camping area. And there is a waterfront there, and there's some other activities that happen there. So if, if the commission's desire to, you know, make it possible to have those folks that are camping at the campground be able to smoke, it would be my recommendation that we look at an exemption for those folks at their own campsites. And I think that would make some sense. The other piece that was brought up that I just wanted to talk a little bit about is the idea of events and, you know, the possibility of disruption to events. And I think through my conversations with the attorney, I think that we could fairly simply take care of that within the special event process, in the same way that we manage alcohol sales and consumption through the special event permit process. So I think there's an avenue within what has been drafted to alleviate those two big main concerns.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, and, and thank you, John, for that. I, um, I do agree with, with what was just stated, and sort of took the words right out of my mouth because the comment that I was going to make was that I think that with regards to Tourist Park, perhaps we could offer, and I'd be happy to offer this amendment when we get back, uh, when we bring the rules back, but that perhaps, you know, this ordinance should not prohibit smoking within the confines of rented campsites at Tourist Park without removing the entirety of Tourist Park from the list. I also think that perhaps we could include an amendment which specifies that there can be designated temporary smoking areas at events and festivals held in city parks on the condition that the event organizers receive permission through the special event permitting process to do that. So I think that those are a couple of solutions that we might have to some of these issues that we're discussing right now.
Commissioner Frazier, did you have something to add?
I think George Parker's a good, like John Swenson said, it's a good idea just to make it, not make one park, but make all parks, all playgrounds, you know, against smoking. Because there's like, you know, two major playgrounds, Madison Park and Prescott, but several little playgrounds around like South Marquette and other areas of town. So I agree with the attorney to speak, just make it blanket, all playgrounds, all parks. And then when it comes to Tourist Park, like Commissioner Stonehouse said, and Swenson said, you could make it, you could smoke by your RV or something like that. If you don't smoke by your RV, you know, same with marinas. Marines, you can smoke on your boat or whatever, but you can't smoke on the dock, you know. And I always said, don't smoke on my boat because it's full of gasoline. But people want to do it, people want to do it, you know. This is what the marina does, if I remember correctly. Commissioner Stonehouse might be able to refresh my memory, but, um, you know, to smoke and drink on your boat, but just not on the city docks. It's just the way they work it. We could do the same thing for the campsite. You know, make it non-smoking throughout the whole area, but, you know, have it, your exemption, like they said, around your campsite, your, your RV or park, whatever, tent, whatever it is. If you're sitting right there by a fire or something like, you could exempt that little area. That's a good idea. And so, another thing is, I'd like to do is, like, we've had a couple of people email us, good thing to include, you know, made the rule back session is to include all types of smoking, like I said before. You know, the new thing is these, is younger, just doing the vaping and the new, the marijuana is legal now. And so we should, you know, make it, think about doing any type of smoking, you know. Whatever gives off smoke, vape, whatever, make it just blanket statement, and then easier for the police to blank sky, just try and make it better for them.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, thank you. My preference would be to look at this at another time so that we can take a look at the ordinance in totality. However, if the majority of the Commissioners really want to vote on this particular section tonight, I'm willing to do that. But I just want to let you know some of the reasons why I feel that we need to take a look at it in its entirety. And one is that there could be some improvements, some updates to some of the definitions. You know, we need to maybe redefine smoking, as we've already talked about, and redefine parks. Parks is not within the definition, so we're not really sure. I think if we asked each one of these, of us Commissioners, we wouldn't really be sure what some of the parks are. Perhaps if all the playgrounds are considered part of the parks, that would take care of one of the issues. And I think it's, it's a little difficult to take it just in this one little portion of the entire ordinance. There are some other things that I think really still come into play in its entirety, and some of that is the events and who is responsible for enforcing them. I find it interesting that the first offense fine for most of these things is fifty dollars, but at Lakeview Arena, it's twenty-five. And, and finally, I think one of my biggest points is I'd really like the other Commissioners to consider not talking about city beaches, but to be talking about all city-owned beaches, or not particular beaches, but all city-owned beaches and Lake Shore. Because I do feel that it's just as easy to sit on a rock and smoke and throw the cigarette into the lake as it is to sit on the beach. Thank you.
Any other discussion, Commissioners? I think we're kind of getting towards the consensus, but Commissioner Schlegel?
And I certainly don't want to come off saying that I'm, I'm pro-smoking, because I'm not. But we've got a lot of good options here, some great, great points that were brought up by Commissioners. I would feel much better if it came back to us at a later date, in a nice, clean version, and also with input from John and the Parks and Rec Department there as to how, how special events will be handled. I just, you know, I think that there's too many loose ends here tonight for me to really want to vote on this. And I'll probably, if we, if we do vote on it, I'll vote no, only because I feel like there's just too much, too much unfinished business. I like the approach that we're headed towards, and I think that it's going to complement our community in the long run. But I certainly feel that, that we need to clean it up. Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
And thank you. I, I agree with that. That's the same place I'm at. Like, I just wish it was a little more together. I, I think good points have been made. I think I am comfortable with what was suggested by city staff for the Tourist Park, but I would like to see it before I'm, to know what I'm voting on. And I'm not comfortable including something like Nema Stowe Park because I, I think there's a, that's a smaller question of like what happens on the downtown streets, which is very different. So that feels like one of the loose ends. So I would, I would prefer to, we have some suggestions, some clear ideas. Bring that all together, come to a clean vote on it.
Okay. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will certainly accept that, you know, of coming back with a cleaner document. I think staff well understands what the Commissioners thinking, which we're going and what changes should, and could easily be made. And I would certainly support bringing it back at a later date as a clean document.
And I, I would agree with that, and I think that we are, we're getting there. We're all kind of on the same page, but we'd probably like to see it in black and white before we take a vote. And it's more complicated than just switching out, you know, one name or deleting one or two things. And City Attorney Ron Keefe, it's not any reflection on the work you've done. It's a, it's a nice ordinance. It's just a more complicated matter than, than can be dealt with, I think, at this moment. So that being said, do we have a motion from the commission? Do we need to take a motion to kick it down the road? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Your Honor, I motion to kick it down the road.
My favorite motion ever.
Restated, the implication to that motion is we return it to staff for additional work and to be brought back to the commission within sixty days.
Seems reasonable.
Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
I will second that motion.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no.
No.
Did I hear no? Okay, so motion passes six to one. Thank you. All right. Next up, we've got the consent agenda. This will require a roll call vote due to item number four-H. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Bonzel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
Do we have a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second the motion.
Any discussion? City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzel?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yep.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to new business, number five, schedule a public hearing to amend Article Four Water and Sewer Rates and Article Six Stormwater Utility of Chapter Forty-eight Utilities of the City of Marquette Code of Ordinances. City Clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. Annual water sewer stormwater rates are set by the Marquette City Commission during the annual budget process. Once the budget has been approved, the current ordinance requires that the City Commission hold an additional public hearing to add the new utility rates to the ordinances. Adoption of the amended ordinances would use the City Commission's approved budget rates without the need for an additional public hearing. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, schedule a public hearing for the September fourteenth, twenty-twenty City Commission meeting to amend the current ordinances. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Mayor Protem Hill?
I move that we schedule a public hearing for the September fourteenth, twenty-twenty City Commission meeting to amend the current ordinances on water sewer and stormwater rates.
Second. Commissioner Schlegel?
Second the motion.
Mayor Protem Hill, any discussion?
Um, no, I'll save that for the public hearing.
Okay. Commissioner Schlegel, any discussion? Any additional discussion by the commission? Seeing none, all in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Moving on to item number six under new business, lobbying services contract renewal. City Clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. At its meeting on August thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the City Commission approved a contract with Karube Associates to provide lobbying services for a term not to exceed two years. The existing contract is set to expire on September first, two thousand and twenty. The city manager requests the City Commission consider approving the attached agreement, renewing the service for another two years through September first, two thousand and twenty-two. The new agreement has the same responsibilities as the existing agreement, providing for twice annual in-person visits in addition to representing the City of Marquette's interests before the Michigan Legislature, Governor's Office, and state governmental agencies. Fiscal effect, the contract is for a term of two years with monthly payments of three thousand dollars, which includes normal expenses. All extraordinary expenses require prior approval by the city. The fiscal year two thousand and twenty budget includes funding for this service. The fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one budget will require allocating three thousand dollars per month. Recommendation, approve the contract between Karube Associates and the City of Marquette for lobbying services, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract on behalf of the city. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Davis?
I move that we approve the contract between Karube Associates and the City of Marquette for lobbying services, and authorize the city manager to sign the contract on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Commissioner Davis, any discussion?
Uh, yeah, three thousand dollars a month, or thirty-six thousand per... Yeah, $3,000 a month or $36,000 per year may seem like an unnecessary expense to the general public as they aren't informed of the interaction and work that's done in Lansing on behalf of the cities, on behalf of the city. However, during these difficult times, I think it's even more important that we have an advocate and a lobbyist close to the state government. Because of our lobbying contract, the City of Marquette is often ahead of and better positioned than other communities on the issues and funding opportunities.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier, anything to add?
I think it's a good idea. I mean, our lobbyist gives us a lot of information down there that we're not able to attend. I mean, Sir Kembensee gives us a lot of information, a lot of contacts, but good to have somebody on the floor listening and see what's going on and give us lots of information.
Just like to add that I have asked the city manager to have the lobbyists provide us with a little bit more frequent updates about the details of what's going on in Lansing and hearing some of what the lobbyists has worked on in the last year. They really do a nice job advocating for us down in Lansing, but it just, a couple more updates would be helpful so that we can help articulate that to the public when they ask us this, what these expenses are for. Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you. I think it's hard sometimes for the general public to understand a lot of what comes from people like these lobbyists. And I'm very leery of myself, of, you know, the whole idea of lobbyists. But the important thing, you know, one of the ideal situations that we benefited from here, and I think it's important to bring up, is the fact that we've got a verbal system in place that our city planning commission had had come up with a number of years ago now. It's been quite effective. And there's a lot of stuff going around in other areas of the state that are completely different than what we have here. And we don't want to get tangled up in what's going on below the bridge when we're doing things okay up here on our own. And it's it's one of the one of the many areas that these guys have helped us kind of, you know, traverse the waters in order to make sure that the work, the hard work that we put in up here hasn't been lost to communities down south that are not maybe as concerned about their neighbors and, you know, how the tax bases are going to be impacted by a number of, in a number of fashions. But this is, that's just one of many topics that, you know, they have made sure to champion on our behalf at this at this point. And so much so, as a matter of fact, that that they've almost, they've offered up to use our our program up here as a template in many areas because it's so well put together. So I think that that's something that we need to to recognize, you know, what are these guys actually doing for us down there? And, you know, I think the key term that I'm going to stick with is we're not getting in the to the to the stuff below the bridge that is, you know, going to ruin our quality of life up here or impact our quality of life in a negative manner because they don't feel, take it as much value to it as we do. So I just wanted to bring that point out.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Stone, oh, no. Was that a raising your hand or not? I couldn't tell. Yes, okay.
A lot of people out there might be familiar with the phrase fighting above your weight, hitting above your weight. In other words, you're getting more done with less than others. You're able to produce more and do more and know more. And the advantage we have is frankly that lobbyist firm that's able to get us ahead of the curve on many things that are happening in the state, and to do that to the great benefit of the City of Marquette. Representative Kembensee does a terrific job of representing us and representing her district, but she can't just represent the city. And when it comes to, you know, push and shove, it's the City of Marquette that has to watch out for itself and its own interests. And that's what the lobbyist firm is able to do so well. So while indeed it's a gulp of money and we have to make a little bit of leap of faith here, the production that we receive from them and the value that we've we have received over a course of probably five years now has been quite substantial. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity.
Any other discussion on this topic? Commissioner Bonzal?
Yeah, I would just agree strongly with what many of my colleagues have said. And and also just note that while I also share Commissioner Schlegel's general distaste for lobbying in general, I think that it's incredibly important that we do have somebody down in Lansing fighting for our interests at a time when, you know, frankly, you know, very wealthy special interests wield a greater amount of influence over our state politics than they have in generations. And so I think it's incredibly important that we have this lobbyist working for us down in Lansing because there are certainly many people who want to take more power away from local governments, who want to make decisions that could adversely impact the City of Marquette. And the UP does frequently get forgotten in Lansing. So I think it's a wise investment for the city to be making. Unfortunately, that's the political reality that we live in.
Thank you. Looking for any additional discussion, not seeing any, let's go ahead and take a vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no. Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to new business, item number seven, offer to purchase city property. This will require a roll call vote. City Clerk, could you please read the background?
Thank you, Mayor. In February 2020, a representative of the Michigan Department of Technology, Management, and Budget Real Estate Division contacted the city manager's office regarding a request to purchase 1.48 acres of property directly adjacent to the Marquette Branch Prison. The state would like to purchase it in order to eliminate any issues associated with the Department of Corrections warehouse that is partially on city property, allow enough room to develop the area directly around the warehouse by installing an expanded driveway big enough to accommodate larger trucks, and establish the channel of the Carp River as a natural boundary for the prison property. A restricted appraisal report was produced by the city assessor for the property, and it was valued at $11,100. The city manager has recommended selling the property for 80% of its appraised value, or $8,880, as permitted by City Code Section 2-506. Fiscal effect, the city will realize $8,880 on the sale of the property. Recommendation, adopt a resolution of intent to sell and direct the city manager to negotiate the sale of the property, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to adopt a resolution of intent to sell and direct the city manager negotiate the sale of property and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution.
Do we have a second? Commissioner, or Mayor Protem Hill?
I second.
Commissioner Frazier, any discussion?
Now, Bishop's for city property on the corner of the State's Bed and Breakfast, so might as well sell it. So let them use it, they can use it for other stuff, and I think it's down by the maintenance department or something like that. So go here to sell it and let them take care of it.
Protem Hill?
Yeah, I was serving as mayor at the time when this came came up. And we've, just over time, you know, a property boundary that was not clearly defined is now better understood, and it's it's being rectified. And I think I'm glad it only took a few months to move this through the process and get it done.
Any additional discussion, commissioners? City Clerk, could you please conduct a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bonzal?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yep.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to our second public comment of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Do we have anyone for public comment?
None.
Seeing none, public comment is closed. Brings us to comments from the commission. Mayor Protem Hill?
Thank you. So I thank you for the discussion tonight. I I think we will be moving, like I said, sometimes it takes a couple, a few months to make things happen, but we have a more thorough discussion. And I think with the smoking conversation, I'm looking forward to getting that resolved here. You know, that would be before the end of the year. So good, I I'm happy we we took that vote. And I guess what I'd like to focus on is is coronavirus and the the, as we're going through these changes in the season and the changes with schooling starting up, that the situation at NMU has come come with the testing program that they put into place. We were able to learn that the population that moved into our area, in fact, had a lower rate of infection than the current population that lives here, at least on the day that they moved here. So that I was greatly reassured that NMU was proactive in that way and took the time and the effort to test, you know, more than 7,000 people, and that we can know exactly what was happening at that point in time, and took took the precautions to make sure that people had a place to quarantine. I knew someone who was in quarantine was taken care of with a few hiccups, but they are taking care of their population. So I think I we, I want the public to know that, and that they're making the data available to the public on their dashboard. There's going to now be a county dashboard that will also that also includes that information. So it's a challenging time, and there's still a lot of uncertainties. But I really want to thank everyone for working so hard to put in place a process that meant that 7,000 people, some of whom were already here, but many of whom were not, have come into our community, and we are taking the pandemic very seriously and taking it into account in our decisions. And as we look at the opening of this K-12 schools, that we are patient and kind with each other as we are going through these great uncertainties, and everyone be safe. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonzal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to first, you know, reiterate my support for the smoking ordinance, although I certainly understand my colleagues' reservations and desire to continue that discussion at a future date. So I'll be looking forward to having that discussion moving forward. I still do believe that the proposed amendments to our smoking ordinance would have been, and hopefully will still be, a great thing for not only the physical appearance of our parks, which is important, but I think even more importantly, they will have a really positive impact on human health in the community and also on our environment, especially Lake Superior. So I'm looking forward to continuing that discussion, and I do remain in support of a smoking ordinance. The only reason I voted no tonight is because I did feel, personally, I did feel that I was comfortable having that discussion and taking a vote tonight. I just also want to sort of echo some of the things that Mayor Protem Hill said. I think NMU on the whole has done a very good job of handling the situation. I was also encouraged to see that NMU case numbers were relatively low. But I do think it's important that, as we continue to see cases rising in Marquette County and in the UP as a whole, that we're all doing everything that we can to behave responsibly, to wear masks, to socially distance, to be practicing good sanitation, especially given the uncertainty surrounding students going back to school, both college students at NMU as well as K-12 students. We still don't know what impact that is going to have on cases in Marquette County and in the City of Marquette. So I think it's incredibly important that we're still exercising caution and staying the course. Finally, I would just note that I think it's really important, public participation in government is really important and in our democracy is really important. So I just want to thank everybody, first of all, who's watching this meeting right now. I also want to thank a couple of folks who did offer public comment tonight. And I also just want to invite everybody to participate in the virtual office hours that I've been holding on Facebook on Saturdays, every Saturday morning from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on Facebook Live, sharing live video and answering questions that are asked by local residents in the comments, or people can message me on Facebook as well, and I'll respond in real time. So we've been doing that for a few weeks. I think it's going really well. I'm really enjoying it. And so I really hope that more people will continue to participate. And the last thing I just wanted to say is that I think that at the end of this month, I believe, we're going to be having absentee ballots mailed out to those who have signed up by that point in time. And so just reminding everybody, we've only got less than a month until absentee ballots begin arriving. And so please do make sure that you're signed up to vote absentee if you wish to do so. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of things. There's a lot of little roadwork projects that have been kind of wrapping up, and it's pretty exciting to see that that happen at this time of the season. So as you're traveling throughout the community, please be aware and and watch for those overlay bumps and things that I, I think most of them are pretty much wrapped up, but just keep keep an eye out for them and make sure that we're keeping our our city workers safe out there that are that are doing it. I know that's, there's a lot of maintenance and things going on that I want to make just certain that, you know, slow down, take your time, give these guys some room. Just going to touch real quick on the smoking thing. I don't think that there were many reservations tonight. It was, this is, this is something that we stand united on, and I'm looking forward to a nice, clean, clean revision in the near future that we can all hang our hat on because I think it's a monumental undertaking for our community to be this concerned and put that much time into something that means so much to our our community and our future and our children. It's just great, it's a, it's a, it's a great step, and I'm glad that we're taking it. Back to school is coming. Please be careful. Look, some communities have already gone back. I think today, some maybe Gwin, if I'm not mistaken, and others tomorrow. And please be careful on the streets. Watch for the kids that are on their way to school and enjoy for the rest of us that are able to not go back until after the Labor Day weekend. Please have a very safe and enjoyable weekend, and remember what stands behind that weekend as well as what it, what we're doing as we move into the school year. So thanks much. Have a great, great holiday weekend.
Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also very much appreciate the conversation on smoking. I do want to point out and just remind everybody that the staff, John Swenson and our and our city attorney, did exactly what we asked them to do, was perhaps our oversight to not ask them to review the entire ordinance. And I'm very happy that we will be looking at it in its entirety in the future. Otherwise, there are two very important dates that are coming up in the near future or before our next meeting, and the first is Labor Day. We are not able to have parades or gather in large groups to celebrate Labor Day, but it's still a good time for all of us to reflect on what the labor movement has meant to our nation and to the work of all of us in terms of safety and hours. So parents, perhaps a little bit of history for your children is in order. And secondly, I need, I know in the other commissioners have talked about it, but the other thing that's going to happen is our K through 12 schools here in Marquette going back to what will look like some sort of a school year, some being online that need additional resources, and some choosing to be in person. And so again, we need to all, we all know what we're supposed to do. We just need to do our part to keep the students and the staff healthy and safe.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Thank you. Let to be, I, I, let there not be any doubt, I think, that the commission looks very favorably on the ordinance on smoking. And what we're simply doing, I think, is, as Commissioner Davis mentioned, bringing back a little cleaner document that we can work from and then go ahead and, and I think pass. The research I've been doing on it says there's about 24 to 30 cities in Michigan that have already done that. So we are at the front of the wave, but we're certainly not breaking the water. But certainly, it's a, it's a good thing for all of us, and we need to think too about fire on Prescott particularly because Prescott is a tinderbox because we do not, as a matter of policy, clean up the brush. We allow it to be natural, and that means tinder. So it's for our own self-preservation of a, of an icon of the city that we we need to take a very serious look at it. City manager, when you get your chance to to talk, can you make a mention on when we might see Lakeshore Boulevard open? Or Lakeshore Drive, rather? And other than that, short but effective meeting. Thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
Probably a short meeting because our city manager was involved with the Probably a short meeting because our city manager was involved with the agenda, maybe because Gary did it. So thank you, Gary. He gave us a good meeting. I think we had a good meeting today. A lot of stuff got accomplished. I think the smoking ordinance could have been passed today. We could have added to it, like City of Suns ordinance always gets changed, add this, add this, take this out, but we didn't change, we didn't do it, so it's fine. We'll do it later. Like Commissioner Stonehouse, people said there's lots of things we could add to it or clean it up. You know, city attorney and the staff have worked very hard on cleaning it up and doing good. And so I'm glad that, you know, the old bookstore downtown got reused or something, get that used because NMU talked about it, a lot of places talked about it. I'm glad something got used for it. And so I think the smoke grounds will be good, you know, because I'm being on Lake Shore, probably can't really include the bike path, but, you know, I think a couple people suggested maybe Lake Shore. I know there's lots of city beaches, but there's a little rock beach in front of the Maritime Museum and the new little park. It's not really considered a city beach, I guess, but a lot of people go there. But like along the waterfront is a good idea because I worked along the waterfront, my dad's boathouse, and one day after a heavy rainstorm, I got like a half a five gallon bucket of cigarette butts washed up at the boathouse out of the lake. So, you know, all this stuff you throw on the road goes in the drain and drains out to the lake and floats back in. It's not good. I asked the manager about possibly putting a filter in there. They said, well, you can't because it's too much, too hard to work. So something to think about, you know, but it was a good meeting and have a good Labor Day.
I think my fellow commissioners have covered it pretty well this evening. The one thing I wanted to add is that Senator Gary Peters will be here this Wednesday for an event at Lake Shore Boulevard to kind of showcase that project. So that will be in the news. Go ahead and watch out for that. That will bring us to comments from our city manager. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you. Just to clarify a point on one of the discussions on the agenda tonight regarding the lobbyists, that I will be working with them to prepare more frequent presentations to the commission. According to the contract, they are required to make two in-person appearances, and I've been kind of letting that slide because of the COVID situation. But I think now that we know that the COVID is likely to last longer than we anticipated, that the lobbyists will be more than happy to make some Zoom appearances if the commission is okay with that. So I'll arrange that. Lake Shore Boulevard, the bulk of the paving, I think, will be done or should be done around the week of the fourteenth of September. We hope to have the whole project done by the end of September. Most of the foundation work is done, but the entire project, except for maybe some shoulder work and maybe some line painting, should be done by the end of the year, end of the month. We're pushing it hard. And lastly, I'll ask Blake, Chief Rebol, if you wouldn't mind going up to the microphone and just giving a brief update on the plans we have for Labor Day weekend.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've worked with Captain Michael Orla, who has prepared a proactive approach to enforcement this weekend. He's paying special attention to the island, the beaches, and obviously the social gatherings that the college may have over the weekend. So we've been doing this probably the last two or three weeks, and we've been updating the city manager weekly on our enforcement efforts. And so that's kind of where we're at right now. So we'll have several officers on overtime during the day, Saturday and Sunday, to deal specifically with those problem areas that we've been having in the past. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for addressing that issue, and we have seen you step up enforcement over the last few weeks, and it's much appreciated. Thank you. Anything else, city manager? Or that was it? That was it, right? We're all good. Okay. We are adjourned at 7:14 PM. Thanks, everyone.